Okay, great. Well, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, June 7th, Policy Committee Meeting of ISD 709. And thank you, everyone, for being here. We have policies for the first reading and then policies for the second reading, regulations, and then a couple items under other. And for one of our guest staff people here is Jason Crane with Director of Special Education. And most of the policies he's going to be looking at are for the second reading. So we're just going to jump to that first to honor his time and need to be someplace else. So again, these are policies we reviewed back in May. The first one was extended school year for certain students with individualized education plans. There was not any comments at the board meeting from other board members, but is there any additional information, Assistant Barnes or Jason? Any?
I have no additional information. It's standard MSBA policy and it covers all of our bases.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, okay. And then again, the next policy, 518 DNI, R, DNI orders replacing policy 5160. So that's a replacement policy and any comments on that?
None for me.
None for me. Standard updated MSBA policy with additional details that I appreciate.
Is this also state law?
Not necessarily state law.
No.
Not to my knowledge.
Has a school district or any entity ever gotten into conflict with this?
Yeah, I've been served with do not resuscitate my child papers from a parent. And this policy.
And their neighbor.
We will try to resuscitate and hand that child off to, for example, 911 responders. And then it's in their hand to work with the parent on whether they have wishes to not resuscitate or do not incubate. And we will continue under this policy to keep kids to our best of ability alive.
And the comments that were made also at the last meeting were that particularly our nurses really appreciated this policy because it adds more kind of specific points. Yeah. Great. And then the next policy was policy 535 and service animals in the schools. And we did have one person speak to that at the last meeting. And so, Jason, I'll have you address.
All right. I don't want to take too much time on this, but I have a few artifacts that I wanted to share with you. One is a document that I've been working with, kind of highlighting my areas of concern with the MSBA policy. And I'll share that with you. You also have an email from me. At 1 o'clock today, Andrea sent me an email with her recommendations. And I also have done my research related to court cases around this. And I'll highlight why, what's important in the policy and what we maybe should consider to edit. So I also wanted to just pass around her parents' permission. This is a photograph. The service animal has been to our school board meetings the last two months in a row. Wonderful service animal and doing great things at Lester Park with, the student's name is Archer. Archer's doing very well with the service animal. So if you want to just pass that around, this is my copy, and I don't know if I got enough for everybody, of what I'm considering for suggestions. And one of the things for suggestions is we have not added the form that is coming around for you that is a standard MSBA form, but I have concerns especially with the form. And that's what the parent was addressing in the meeting. I'll wait till you get all those in your hand. What we've learned through litigation related to service animals across the country is that there's certain things that you can ask and certain things that you shouldn't ask. And in the MSBA policy, on page two, under section four B, highlights what we can ask under bullet point one and two. We can ask if the service animal is required because of a disability, whether that be a student with an IEP or a student who benefits from a 504 plan.
Excuse me, one minute, just because we were just getting them. Can you go over what 20 references?
In 535 policy, page two, section four, letter B, we can ask those two questions. And those are really the only two questions we should ask. So within this policy, I didn't read the second one, but what is the worker task that the animal provides and is trained to assist an individual to have access within the school building? Those are the two questions we can ask. So within the policy later, it references you need to get permission via a form. And you have a copy of the form in front of you right now. And I recommend that we don't use the form. We have other processes to do this, whether it be for a student with an IEP, student who benefits from a 504 service plan, or even a faculty member, a staff member that requires additional assistance in school. We have other venues to do that, for example, IEP meetings, 504 planning meetings. That will cover our bases. We don't ask individuals with a disability in the community and/or in school settings who, for example, benefits from the use of a wheelchair for permission to use their wheelchair in a facility. It's that similar, it's a tool that supports the individual to get around and have access in their building. Same with service animals. The reason I showed you the picture was if you notice the red harness that's on the back of the dog, that's common practice and typically those say service animals on there. And there's even a spot, if somebody chooses to have the certification, you can have a certification tag also on there. And most individuals who use a service animal have that type of recognition so that nobody questions them whether they're in the community at a grocery store. I see that quite common now. I think we've learned a lot over the last 20 years. 20, 25 years ago, people would say, why is that dog in my store? We don't ask those questions anymore. We just take for granted that the individual, and according to this policy, has all the requirements in place. And as I've highlighted some things and Andrea has highlighted a little bit more, if you want to go step by step with some of those and just talk about them, my first suggestion is on page two under C. It's the first time the policy talks about the use of the form. I recommend we don't use the form.
And we don't need it because any individual student that's going to need a service animal is going to work through the IEP process and the other systems already in place.
Yeah, so Andrea's example is she identified to the school, wanted to have an IP meeting, discussed with the IP meeting exactly what questions one and two cover that we can ask about. And then we embedded that within the IEP and that was the permission to have the animal in school.
How does it work if it's staff? So I don't know that's not necessarily.
Well, we have staff, for example, with heart of hearing needs. And when they need an interpreter, they just make a request for the interpreter. They don't need to say, can I have an interpreter? So they describe what tasks they need support with and we provide the services, the district does.
Mr. Crane, is there a reason why, have we ran this through our attorney though? Because this looks like it would protect the district in case there was damage.
We have not run it by our attorney.
You know, as a result of the animal being there. And it also identifies that the individual or the family would be responsible or not hold the dish responsible for damaged property and so forth. So I just want to make sure that we don't miss an opportunity to protect ourselves legally. That's what I question.
Well, embedded within the document, it references the insurance coverage. And we do have insurance covered, the parent does. The family has insurance covered with their own homeowner's insurance policy. I should not have even asked that family if they had that coverage. I should have just said, this is recommended that you have family coverage to cover the service animal in the school. And just make that recommendation to the parent and then it's up to them to do that. But I shouldn't say prove it. And that's one of the things through my research related to court cases is that one's in Colorado for up to $35,000 in damage awards related to what the district asks the family. And they shouldn't have done those things. So just citing a little bit of research about court cases.
But it does get, we are entitled to ask them for documentation on vaccinations and other.
We're not.
I thought that said that.
It does say that there, it shouldn't be in there. And we have our own.
My first questions and then I saw later on that it did.
It does say that there. That's one of my questions about should we, I circled the word shall on my document.
Right.
Because I wonder about that word shall, does it mean you have to? We should not ask families if the dogs are vaccinated. We should assume that they are, but that's the parent's responsibility.
So is this MSBA?
This is an MSBA policy.
And yours is questioning whether we should remove the shell.
Because of the court case research that I've done?
Then I think we should run that by, and part of it, just so you know, Jason, like we're trying to like make sure that if there's a change, particularly with the shell, that we run that by the legal team, just make sure that there isn't. Because maybe there's, maybe there's other wording that needs to be included there, right? Because the court case.
So I have a memo from our, what's the acronym for? MACE, the MACE organization, Mick Walzberger, what's that law firm? It starts with squires or? Brooke Anderson, Squire, Walzberger and MACE. In that, I didn't bring it today, I could easily access it.
That is just, it's been reviewed then?
It's been reviewed by them and they have recommendations for things exactly like the word shell. You should stick with the two questions is what the MACE document highlights.
Sounds good.
And then the reason scratching out A is because it's directly related to this form.
The form, yeah.
And then the only question I probably would follow up with the School Board Association is wouldn't other school districts be going through the same process as we are with IEPs, et cetera? And so why the form? Is that just in case that's not happening? Do you think that's why the?
So maybe the best recommendation for today's meeting is to pull this, pull this for another month. And then let me do the recommended phone calls and get a red line version that is acceptable.
And then we can maybe follow up with NSBA as well. And I think that's fine, too. I mean, there wasn't, we'll have August to do the second reading on it and then.
Sounds great.
So it can be passed by the school year.
We don't meet in June or July?
Today's, today is June.
Or June and July.
July, we'll be talking if we are going to meet or not. Sometimes it's just really tricky with the Fourth of July and people's holidays, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah, for this particular committee. But so everyone in agreement, we'll pull it.
Yeah, I was just saying.
Gather some more information. Thank you for the work that you've already gathered on this, Jason.
Just so you know, it's going well with the current service animal.
And I actually met the parent and met the service animal and student at Lester Park one day by coincidence and they all reported that things were going well, too. So I think that, I think the parent had just tried to communicate and wanted to make sure that things were well structured in policy and things for the future.
That's great.
We're all going in a good direction. Thank you.
Well, does he have any other?
No, just the last policy then is 615 testing accommodations. And again, that one is a new policy, but we've been following the practices. So it's just really putting in place the policy is for that.
Yeah.
So anybody have any questions on that one then? Okay. Okay.
Thanks for giving me a good.
Thank you, Jason, so much. Appreciate your work and we'll confirm with you that we're not doing the July meeting and it'll be in August.
Good.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we'll go back then to policies for the first reading and it's policy 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies. And that was the one that we discussed at our retreat and got some recommendations on at our retreat. And so we're reviewing it. And Superintendent Magus, did you want to speak to any of the comments at the time?
Sure.
For potential changes?
So, and I think part of, and I'm just speaking more informally rather than just for conversational purposes. But I think we're all trying to get better about like what should our policy, what should our policy practices be? And then also how can we pace things out as a board and administration so that we can bring everything up to date and make sure that it's as current as possible? One thing that we also sought some additional feedback on, even last week, with Terry Morrow from MSBA, was the MSBA is starting to move away from regulations. We have a lot, we have quite a few regulations in our work. But basically what we talked about during the retreat is we want to try to make sure that we're embedding less of the how do you do it kind of administrative guideline stuff into our policy and so the policies are longer standing and a little bit more general. So, you know, in a policy, we don't want to say, please use the cream colored form found in Mr. Smith's office, right? Because that's not going to necessarily be long standing because it might not be cream colored and there might not be a Mr. Smith anymore. So that was part of it. But then also thinking about how do we, as far as, we want to make sure that we have strong administrative guidelines that spell out for administration how to enforce and enact our policies. But we want to try to avoid getting into deeply prescriptive kind of managerial language within our policies. So that was another piece. And Mr. Morrow from MSBA was saying that as a general entity, they really are trying to move away from regulations because regulations are kind of like, kind of like policyfied guidelines. And you're better off keeping it separate where you've got your policy in place and more of a separation between the two. And I think that that, part of the reason why that was part of our administrative retreat was because sometimes when the line of governance is not quite as clear, sometimes boards will start writing in the policy more prescriptive language that tells people, you know, on a third Tuesday, you're going to do X, Y, and Z. And that, that's not as long living, there is long lasting. So we're trying to make these more timeless. So those are a couple of things that they advised when we review this policy, we consider. And I think that the policy as it's stated here is 208 is, it meets that. And I guess it's just kind of more of a reminder of where should we be in integration of those policies? That's kind of what I got out of it. But, and I'm not sure if there were other major changes from the original to the revision in 2022. Anything else that you or others would add? They did talk about emergency policies that, including a sunset date within, under section four C. And I think about some of the things we had to do during COVID where we wrote in like an expiration of certain policies or that at least they were tied to statutes that were expiring so that we, we knew when things would end, if they were going to end. So I think hopefully we won't have a need for that type of emergency policy based on another pandemic or continuing pandemic. But it does remind us that especially, I would say, like during the pandemic, the board gave me some pretty broad powers as far as enacting and changing certain policies or procedures that were, it's kind of like wartime, wartime powers for a president that sometimes you give certain authority for a set period of time. But I think it's important as a governing board to recognize that that should be done only in extenuating circumstances and it should be time linked so that those powers are brought within the normal framework of governance.
Yeah, when I read that, I thought, I thought of the pandemic and masking and was around that, for example, so.
I think in four D, we just want to make sure the list there, it talks about the policies that are reviewed once every three years and then.
That's five D, I think. I was going to ask the same question.
Excuse me, five D, sorry, thank you.
I was going to ask a similar question.
Yeah, and then just making sure that lists that they have here are, is a full list if there's some additional ones that should be listed there.
I mean, how did that list come about? So I mean, again, is this something that's in state law?
Yeah.
That these, and is the reason for the review just so they're talked about? And it reminds everybody that these policies are in existence? Or are there kind of annual updates or tweaks to these? What's the history there?
I think part of it is kind of the serious safety related nature of a lot of them. And also that some of them are, some of whom change relatively quickly. Like thinking about, you know, internet acceptable use and safe policy. Technologies change, ways of working together change. Crisis management and those things are also things that are safety related. And as we learn more about how to do things better, I think they just want to make sure like these are the ones that, when I look at these, these are ones that will, will get us in trouble if we don't do it right. Both from a, it could result in significant harm to somebody, but it could also put us into a legal or other place of liability where we want to be really careful and thoughtful. Anything with the family medical leave that you, I mean, do you think that's kind of why for that one as well?
Yeah.
So one thing we talked about during the retreat as well was really trying to put together a board plan where we, where we try and chunk out and do about a third of the policies each year. And I think that that will, it'll be hard getting through that first three year cycle. But I think once we have done it, I think will, our policies will be fresher and brighter and cleaner than they've been in a while and it'll be easier to go through as we keep going.
And as we also talked is that we're trying to do kind of chunks of policies, you know, so we can get through the different numbered chunks in more of a systematic way. And then, this has been mentioned more than once, but in August then, the School Board Association at our August, they have an August, not a retreat, they call it something, August, August session. Yeah, their August session anyways. That's when we would get any policy changes that are required by state law that came out of the legislative session. And that goes to the school district, it'll go to the superintendent, it'll come to us as board members. And so that's another kind of touch point on what we need to be reviewing is coming from the School Board Association. And probably the Superintendent's Association gets out something very similar. And, and so we'll get notices that way as well. But I think if we could just double check that list and I think we could do it with Terry Morrow as well. Any other questions on this one?
No, just that I think it's a great idea to have, you know, a chunk, you know, to tackle one third one year, another third another year. And that'll be really good for us as a school district, so.
One thing that came up today in a meeting just prior, there's, there was some work being done by a group related to protecting the rights of gender fluid and transgender students. And they were feeling strongly that we should put something into a regulation rather than a, rather than just administrative guidelines. And I think what, I just, this is just something for us to think about as we work forward. I think when somebody reads something that says administrative guideline, that doesn't sound, doesn't sound very powerful. I mean, a guideline, like it's a guideline, but we deviated from the guideline. I want to make sure that if there are things that are protecting people's rights or related to safety or legality, that we think about how do we, how do we make sure that language is powerful enough that we're actually following through with what we say to, if that makes, if that makes sense.
So when you said a group's working on that, is that we have some staff in the district working on it? So that would be brought forward?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And there wasn't an MSBA policy on that, but there was a, some work, they looked at some policies from some of the MSD groups like St. Paul and a couple other places just because we want to make sure that people have their rights protected.
And I think, you know, when we, when we take a look at those, taking, you know, reviewing our harassment policy and things like that, because we do have a lot of policies in place already that protect all students. And so that'll be a good conversation to make sure, yeah.
With this policy on policies, we, you know, this will be the first reading of it. If we don't have a meeting, a policy meeting in July, then the second reading would be in August. So if we felt that we should have this on for discussion at that board retreat just to allow any other input from board member, or to at least have them review it as when we have the retreat on July 20th, that might be good to just bring it there one more time being we had a couple of board members miss the retreat we had in April.
That would be good.
So one thing real quick, I think it's, and John kind of brought up, Superintendent Magus brought up kind of an example, implementation of access. So five E, I guess I was just thinking, if you could walk through a scenario, John, how that might work? I mean, you kind of started to with, you know. So five E is, I'll read it. When no school board policy exists, to provide guidance on a matter, the superintendent is authorized to act appropriately under circumstances, keeping in mind the mission educational philosophy and financial condition of the school district. Now, you talked about the situation, you know, you talked about in the meeting earlier with, we don't have a policy and we don't have guidance or rules, regulations, whatever, on that issue that I just mentioned. I'm just curious, how does, how would this work in your eyes?
For like.
Five E, yeah.
So the way that I'm thinking about, let's just say, and I'm just trying to make something up.
Yeah, I know.
When we had the TikTok thing about the soap dispensers, right? Where people were spamming all the soap dispensers. We might decide as an administration, like we are really going to reinforce, you know, what we're doing related, and that's a bad example. But, but you can kind of think of like, let me see. Let's say kids start wearing spiked sandals that are stepping on kids' toes and like that becomes a new fashion and we decide that we're going to create a new rule that says no more of these spiked sandals that are stepping on kids' toes because it's causing a safety risk. We might decide as an administrative team that that's something that we need to put in place as a rule, but it hasn't become a policy. But then let's just say that continues and it's just like widespread and something that continues to be an issue for districts around the country. Then when it comes to time to go back to dress code, we might consider how do we specifically work that into a policy? And I know that's kind of a goofy example, but I was just trying to.
Well, I'll expand on that just a little bit because I'm thinking of other things that have happened recently, like the bear spray thing that was going on for a while at one of our schools. So, so yeah, you get these situations like these, what do you call it, a TikTok challenge? Or what's, is there another name for these that, you know, all of a sudden becomes this fad and, you know, they become popular or a problem in buildings? I mean, I don't know how you can come up with a policy that, you know, TikTok, TikTok challenges or whatever, let's, you know, not have these in our schools. But maybe we should, I mean, I don't know. That's just throwing something else out there on your.
Yeah, or say the Supreme Court changes a ruling on something related to rights that is part of what we've, we've been trying to cover. We might decide as an administrative team that even though some of the state law or federal law that might be part of what that, that policy was based on, we might decide this is still something we want to embody and are going to embody. And we might decide this is how we're going to still enforce our rules. And we're going to keep it that way as far as an administrative rule. But then we might, we would probably through our cycle, when we come back to it, we would want to say, hey, we're going to, we're going to work this back into policy in some way because the policy that we had in place isn't, isn't normal, it's not supported any longer. Does that make sense?
All right, I just kind of wanted to walk through that.
Well, that's.
Here's Danny, I know it's been working in some, in some ways, again, it's going to, you know, you've got to, you've got to act, you've got to do something to get us to a point where then we can work through a policy on addressing it if necessary.
So.
So we're gonna table this one too?
Well, not, not table that, it'll, it'll move in at our next.
Okay, second reading.
For the second reading. But what we might want to do, just because we have that retreat on, in July, July 20th, have that, have a, an agenda item just to quickly have any other input from all board members on A. And I'm going to suggest that on B, which is again, the code of ethics. And so that's, that's the 209 code of ethics. And that's a school board code of ethics. And again, we reviewed it a little bit at the April retreat, but I just want to put it there one more time at this next retreat. So we're all kind of focused on it together and asking any questions. And, but any particular questions on, on what we have in front of us?
I just actually have my notes from our original one. So these are, these have the changes made, I'm noticing, so.
But feel free to.
Yeah, feel free to share those. Number two, where it says, come to the meetings prepared for discussion of the agenda items. I remember, remind me of his name that went through the planner.
Right, right.
Ray Cleaner, yeah, sorry, because I was only there the once. But he had questioned the word prepared, like, come to, originally it was come to the meetings prepared for discussion of the agenda items. What does that mean? You know, like, there's different levels of it. Not, I'm not saying we shouldn't have it in there, but I'm looking at my notes here, yeah.
And I think about how some of those things intersect with administrative responsibilities too, like, and I'm, this is something we need to improve on, and we've talked about it. Like, if I'm including my superintendent's report 10 minutes before the meeting because we've, we've been in COVID times, that's one thing. But now that we're getting into a different, different timeframe, we need to make sure that things are on, on the agenda and on, on board book the Friday before so that you have time to really digest it.
Yeah.
It, it makes it fair for, we need to set you up as board members so that you have time to digest it and ask the questions you need to and maybe get input from others and not spring stuff on you. So that's, that's part of it. And also, if there's something really complex that maybe is, maybe you have a controversial question, sometimes it's nice to be able to give, give us a heads up that, hey, like, I know, like, I have questions about this and I'm going to ask this at tonight's board meeting or tomorrow's board meeting or whatever, so that we can be ready for it too. Because that way we're, we're not caught off guard. And I'm not saying you can't ask questions in the moment, that's totally fine. But if there's something that's really technical, like how many students benefited from X, Y, and Z, we're probably not going to be able to answer that in a board meeting. But, but if you give us a heads up ahead of time, we can be ready with it.
Yeah, and you can have time to put a little more thought into the, into the answers as well.
Do you want to review any other comments? Were there any other ones from there?
Yeah, well, I, I do see some, it's up, it's up to us. But number five, originally it was uphold the decision of the school board, even if my position concerning the issue was different. And I remember we had a discussion on that, it's not up to the school board to uphold, right? It's for someone else to take that policy and make sure that it's implemented, not the school board. So it's changed to support, support the decision of the school board, I noticed, even if my position concerning the issue is different. Maybe I'm thinking about that wrong, but I noticed there was a change in that, so.
You know, it might be good, before this goes out to the whole, the rest of the board again, that the changes that were made are highlighted in a way.
So the changes.
This one, I don't have changes.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, did we, like, is that the model policy that you're holding there?
It's whatever was given to us in that meeting by Ray.
Right, and I'm like, I can't remember.
So Rose can look at it, I think.
When does it say it was revised?
Yeah, that was 2018, I think this is.
Okay, because this, our.
Oh, is that the difference?
So here's a good, here's a good, right, thanks for catching. Because this, the policy we have here.
Because I was kind of confused, I was like.
So the policy we have here is the 2009.
Oh, I got it, I apologize.
So, no, no, actually, you're, like, caught it, because we're, we're looking, we currently have a 2009 policy, so we want to bring up the 2018 policy.
All right, well, there, now we can work on it.
So, so this, we don't have the right thing in front of us anymore?
No.
And that's me, I pulled the wrong one. So I'll pull the right one and I'll put it on.
Okay.
But, but we could review it at our meeting that we have. And I have these notes from, that I'm happy to copy off and email to everybody if they want. I just know that I took.
Well, actually, we, we have the notes that he made, he, he sent the notes to us.
Yeah, I think I cut paste them originally, but I can reshare those.
Yeah, and you, you had sent them out once, but I, I do think that this is a good one. In fact, one of the comments that was, I think we even made that comment is, if we're going to do a follow-up retreat, let's review this some more. And so if you could do that and include it with what goes out for the board for this first reading.
Sure.
Yeah. So we're not going to table it, but we'll just discuss it more at the board retreat. We'll still do the first reading next week or at the board meeting, the June board meeting. Okay, yeah. And, and then was there anything under regulations? And then the last item then was, and thank you so much, Patty, for putting this together. But this policy committee was first established in June of 2020? 2019, 2020, yeah. And so this has always been a good time to just kind of review what we've done for the year. So that's what we had asked Patty to put together, including the ones we're discussing now, just to kind of get a sense of what we've accomplished as well as a good kind of quick look at where we're going. So this was just more informational for that reason.
And I want to say thanks to this committee. I think that the, part of what we're doing now is figuring out our structure and cadence and process that allows us to get through those bigger chunks of policy. And we're making, we're making much greater progress than we were able to during the pandemic. And I also appreciate the, the flexibility the board showed in letting us focus at some of the more urgent work that we had over the past couple of years. Though policy is important, policy is what, how lives us and outlasts us. It's good that we're turning our attention more deeply back to it.
Great, thank you. So the only other item then is, so July, if we aren't going to hold a meeting in July, and I'm just looking at the calendar that you provided us for this week, Patty, for, it doesn't go into July anyways. So then we would have our next meeting in August. And if we were going with the second Tuesday of the month for the pow, cow, pow, cow. It's actually primary election day, so we can't be meeting after a certain time, after six for any meetings. So I'm not sure if.
So is that cow meeting need to get rescheduled too?
We would, yeah, I, I would.
And we are, and you're talking about the.
August 2nd.
August 9th.
Oh, I thought it was the 9th. I just noticed that the.
The cow meeting's been the second Tuesday.
Cow meeting's on the 2nd.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking the, the cow meeting was the.
Is the primary the 9th?
The primary's the 9th, but has our cow meetings been the, the first Tuesday?
Yeah, so the cow meeting would be the second, policy would be prior to the cow meeting on the 2nd. HR finance would be scheduled the 9th by what I have on my calendar here.
It's also national night out, which I know.
Which one, the 9th?
Some years, no, that's the second, the first Tuesday of August is, is the second.
That's good to know.
Yeah. And.
So I think I missed, what, what we, what was decided regarding July 5th?
I think we did, 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 well, I guess I'm assuming we were deciding, did we want to or not want to hold a policy meeting on Tuesday, July 5th?
We have a cow meeting already scheduled for that date.
And I'm already exploring through discussion, moving that also to either the following week, which is the 12th.
Okay.
It hasn't been communicated yet with the board chair on that one. But that would be my desire is to move that cow meeting from the 5th to the 12th, either before or after the. HR finance.
Oh, okay.
Because, again, because of timing implications and availability for July 5th.
Sure, if we do that, then it comes, if you're doing already back to back, I think it gets more complicated to do back to back to back meetings.
Yeah, I, so, so I think it would be okay if we did not do a policy meeting in July. Yeah.
I don't think there's anything that's imminent, is there?
No.
Pressing.
And I think we'll talk about policies to some extent during our, during our work session, which is currently scheduled for the.
20th of July.
I'm trying to walk through, but I don't believe we need to come to policy, though. It needs to go to HR finance potentially. So if we, a new contract was voted on for our school resource officers at the end of this month. I'm trying to think, it goes through, you can't vote on it at a cow meeting. So I'm just trying to think of where, you know, if it's a contract, with such a large contract, doesn't that, doesn't that go through HR finance?
No, that just goes through the business.
Business, okay, just checking. All right, I'm just trying to just make sure we don't miss a, a timing of anything, okay. So what I just heard it say is, we will be canceling the July 5th policy committee, correct? I will be exploring moving the cow meeting to the 12th.
And I did reshare with all of you, there's a proposed meeting schedule out there for all of you to review with.
Yeah.
It's already, and I did take into consideration restricted meeting dates that MSBA gives us a list. But yeah, we can.
Do, do we need to approve that at the June meeting?
I, when I was looking at, I don't even know if it's something that has to be approved. It's just we need to come to a consensus maybe. So I was going to bring it up for discussion at the school board agenda setting meeting. But then if we know at that time, then I can get all the spaces reserved and have everything figured out.
Do you want to send it out one more time? Have you gotten any response?
I just sent it to all of you right now.
Yeah, I know I haven't responded. Yeah, okay, great.
I may have to participate remotely in the school board meeting on the 19th because I have a out of town training with Adele.
So jumping to August, then, we would have, the, the cow meeting would be on August 2nd.
So that's national night out, right? So we'd have to move that, oh, what, what I heard you say is we can't go past 6 o'clock, is that what you're saying?
That's on August 9th, that's the, the primary election day, that's the 9th weekend. Yeah. Um, but.
Looks like they've already moved that meeting to Monday, the 8th, on this schedule that Patty just sent us.
Okay, which meeting?
Took that into, for the HR business services, we moved to August 8th. So in your email would be this proposed schedule. And then this, none of this has been decided yet. So if you think with Superintendent Magus being on on the 19th, if we should move the July meeting, that might be an option. And if you want to, if you're talking about moving these on, like, now would be the time to make any, or if you guys want to review this and get back to me, and, you know, whatever you want. This would be the time to make it before our school board meeting this month.
This sounds like a cow meeting discussion too, if we're going to talk about moving a school board meeting July 19th?
Yeah, I think we can still hold it, I could just, if I need to participate remotely.
Or maybe this is something else, when, well, your work session's not until July 20th. So this needs to be decided by the end of this month, so I can host these meetings in enough time for people to have.
Could be a discussion item at the June board meeting, couldn't it?
Yeah, we could discuss it then, for sure.
Maybe that would be a good deadline to get feedback though. So if there are any recommended changes, that's when we have kind of the final discussion. So in terms of the policy committee meeting and the cow meeting in August.
If those are done by 5, 6 o'clock, that's not so much of a problem, is it, for national night out?
You know, I, I know last year we, we moved it because we want, you know, we didn't have national night out the night, the year before. And so there was that idea that it would be really good if people participated, they were out in their communities. And, you know, for all those reasons, I, I guess, I, I host a party. So like, for me, I probably wouldn't be able to be there because I'm putting one on and we have a big one. But I, you know.
So that's something to be discussed then too, with the board chair and.
I know.
Yeah, if you're going to move that to a Monday or a Wednesday.
The Monday prior on the first is the MASA conference. So that might not be a good, good day, but we could move it to Wednesday or Thursday that week.
And so I, I think if we move the cow meeting, if we, if we can, just move the, the policy meeting. So we're back to back, like we're, we're doing, and if it means coming at 1:30, or whatever time.
I prefer not coming at 1:30.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's.
But would you at 3:30 then?
I can do that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Just for confirmation, so what was, what was just confirmed just there?
That's what we're leaning towards, moving it from, that's what it sounds like to me. To the third and the fourth, to the third and the fourth, but.
But to be discussed at the.
At the board, at our board retreat, yeah.
I do, so we are changing that.
Why is it being done before the board retreat? You can't do it at the board retreat, because that's not until July.
No, we, we talked about just as part of the.
June board meeting.
At the June 19th board meeting.
Yeah.
But that would give, rather than saying we definitely are going to do it now because we, probably other people that need to be talked to, just to moving it or to see if there's anything else on those two days. But I would welcome it to be moved to Wednesday or Thursday. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else? Okay, great. And if, we could just follow up with Jason, so he knows we definitely are not doing the July meeting in terms of the information he, he would be bringing forward. So we can adjourn and then at, what's our next thing we're going to?
Graduation.
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 Graduation at 3:30.
Antique Village.
Yeah.
Antique Village.
And then the second one is at Mitchell Autocorona.
Are we adjourned?
We are adjourned. Because I was there, that was a mistake that I was included, I was there.